Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting for the Beaverton School District for August 31st, 2020. I'd like to welcome you all this evening and we will be starting off first with a roll call of the board members to see who is present. If you could just say present or here when I call your name. And Brian?
Here.
Donna Tyner?
Here.
Eric Simpson?
Here.
Leanne Larson?
Here.
Susan Greenberg, here. Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Here.
And Chair Becky Timcheck, President. All right, we are going to start off this evening hearing from our partners from the OSEA and the BEA and we'll start off this evening from hearing from our BEA President Sarah Schmidt. Sarah, welcome.
Hello, good evening Superintendent Grodding and Board Chair Timchuk and members of the school board. I am Sarah Schmidt. I'm actually starting my fifth year as the BEA President. Time flies. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As we sit here over Zoom again, ready to kick off a new school year, I want to ask you to do two things. First, to acknowledge the context in which we're starting this new school year with the COVID-19 pandemic still active in our community, the isolation that has resulted from the physical and social distancing, the economic crisis that has had a disproportionate impact on the communities that have already been struggling, and the generations of racial injustice and police brutality that have resulted in an uprising with nightly protests on the streets not too far from where we sit. Second, I ask that you join me in taking a moment to reexamine as we start this new school year, those two big letters on BSD's branding, "we." I ask you to reflect on who we are and what we hope for in these unprecedented times. So here's where I think we can all agree, public schools are the heart and soul of our community and we're all serving in our roles because we care deeply about education, about lifelong learning, inspiring and empowering youth and making a difference. We are a staff of incredible talent, expertise, experience, and professionalism. We're a community with incredible cultural and linguistic diversity. We believe that every child, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, ability, or zip code, has the right to a nurturing educational experience. And we as a system are growing in our understanding and commitment to inclusivity, equity, and anti-racism in our work. We are a community that cares deeply about academic excellence and innovation. I think however, we haven't been living up to our fullest potential as a community. During this pandemic, plans were made for distance learning and the return to school by those who are the farthest away from the work without voices of students, families, and educators front and center. A traditional hierarchy of leadership has been in place that leads to top-down decision-making. And over the last few years, it seems as though the "we" has gotten lost in the nooks and crannies of this growing district. I think we can do better than this and I know that we will. So as we look ahead together towards the 2020-2021 school year, I see endless opportunities for us to work together, to reimagine education, to repair harm that has been done, to improve on old systems, to take risks and try new things together, to learn from our mistakes, and to broaden our definition of success. So I'm holding myself to these commitments as well as asking you to join me in making these commitments to live up to our goal of being a united community that is embodied in that "we." So let's find meaningful ways for BEA, OSEA, BSD leadership and this school board to establish meaningful partnerships. Let's elevate student voices. Let's hold up educators as the experts and professionals that we are and include educators in the first step of decision-making rather than the last. Let's seek voices that haven't been heard and create multiple leadership pathways. Let's make an unequivocal commitment to anti-racism and educational justice. Let's establish new systems for accountability. Let's remember our shared humanity and leave plenty of space to help our students understand what's happening in the world around them and how they can make change. And let's prioritize time for true collaboration between educators, families, and students. Let's say that we are in this together and mean it. Our students deserve it. Thank you again for the time tonight and let's have a great school year.
Thank you very much Sarah for joining us tonight. And next we will hear from the President from the OSEA, Amy Knudsen.
Good evening to the school board members, to the school staff, and to community members. I'm Amy Knudsen. This year I'm taking over the role of OSEA Chapter President for the Beaverton School District. I have some very large shoes to fill as Diana Hess has moved into a new role in the superintendent's office and I would like to first of all thank her for all that she contributed to our organization over her many years of service. I know that this year is going to be unlike any other year and I'm thankful for the support of my executive team and all the classified members as we work together to make this year successful. I'd like to thank the school board and the district administration for recognizing all of the ways that classified staff can still contribute to the success of our students and our families. Classified employees within the district choose these jobs because we care deeply about the students in our community. And we know that there is so much more that goes into a child's educational success than just the time spent with their teachers. The custodial, maintenance, food service, transportation, office and technical support, health services, campus support, and instructional support employees have always played an important role in the overall success of our students. And we are prepared to roll up our sleeves and get creative to find new ways to support our community during this time of comprehensive distance learning. We're committed to the flexibility and collaboration it's going to take during this time and we welcome the challenges that we can help to solve. We look forward to the day we will be able to physically welcome our students back into the buildings, but until then we will be here working behind the scenes to make the 2021 school year as successful as it can be. So again, thank you to all the dedicated classified staff for the patience and flexibility throughout this difficult season that has been full of unanswered questions. And thank you to the school board for the opportunity to continue serving our community.
Thank you very much Amy for joining us tonight. We appreciate that. And at this time I'd like to ask the board members if they have any changes to the agenda. I do not see anybody with any changes to the agenda. So we will first start off with public comment. Public comment, we're accepted online. This is the way we need to do this during our Zoom time. We had open submission all last week and it closed at 12 o'clock on Saturday and I have submitted to the board members. You each got a copy of them and they will be submitted into the minutes at this time. We'll just try to summarize. We had two public comments and one was from a parent about the concerns about putting our students, especially elementary, in pods or microschools and that this could maybe perhaps be not equitable for all of our students and looks for other ways for us as a school board to try to come up with ways to support equity with our students. So that was one of the concerns and then the other was from a district staff member who was speaking, wanted to share the voice of our Black students and actions they would like to see in our schools. And they would like to, for equity, see discipline, changes in our discipline with SROs being removed and adding a policy for hate speech and curriculum where we have anti-racist focus and accountability for graduation and exclusionary practices and access to improve interpretation and translation services and support report cards and other documents in other languages besides English and ask the board to address those. So the board will not be addressing those this evening, but we will get back to these folks and we appreciate everyone that took the time to submit public comments and the board members have all, in detail, all of those public comments. So thank you very much for participating in that. Our first report tonight will be from Superintendent Grodding. Superintendent, it's all yours.
Thank you Chair Timchuk. Welcome board members, staff, and community members out there. Needless to say, this is going to be a different start to the school year. Our immediate priority is creating a successful return to school in distance learning with our students and staff. As you know, COVID-19 has significantly impacted our students, families, and staff. Our immediate priority is to plan for a successful distance learning for all students and families and to prepare for the eventual return to school to in-person instruction. My, our staff's key priorities, and I know key priorities of the board, include safety, equitable access, wraparound services for our most vulnerable and most marginalized populations and to provide a more rigorous and supportive instructional environment for all students. This year we will be tracking and reporting on engagement, attendance, grading, and achievement. This has really been a huge lift both on the teaching and learning side and the instructional side. It's been the work of many, both internal and external stakeholders, to include teachers, TOSs, administrators, parents. We have really tried to reach out, engage folks, look at the survey data that's come out on where we fell short. It's very important to ensure that all of our students have connectivity, but not just to have the connectivity, to have those wraparound services to make them successful. The second area I want to talk about is professional development and I think you heard President Schmidt talk about professional development and the idea to promote and instill equity and anti-racist behaviors throughout our district. It is a key priority of mine and I know this board. We are in the process right now of working with both internal and external stakeholders. Some of these groups include our BIPOC students and staff. We're engaged with groups including BMAC, BMAC, our Black Parent Union, Beaverton Families for Equity, and others as we move forward. We are in the process of starting professional development with outside stakeholders who are entrained in this work to address racism, implicit bias, culturally relevant teaching practices, disproportionate discipline and other equity issues resulting in negative outcomes impacting our students of color, poverty, second language, and disabilities. We just recently administrators were able to attend a professional development focused on equity and racism and wanted to do the special reach out. It was short notice, but I know Chair Timcheck, Vice Chair Colette, and Board Member Donna Tyner, who I believe was there the entire time, participated. So appreciate your participation. Our goal is to reduce the amount of time it's going to take to train all staff. My goal is to have every, each and every staff member in the Beaverton School District have some training within three years. And the training is not going to be the same for everyone. It cannot be the same for everyone. It cannot be the same for our BIPOC staff and we all are on a different journey when it comes to exhibiting anti-racist behaviors and understanding what equity means for our most vulnerable and marginalized students. So right now we're working with, once again, external and internal stakeholders to contract with outside providers that will come in, work with our leadership team, work with the school board, work with all of our staff in having this completed. So we're excited about that. I think there's a real excitement as we get ready to do this work. It will be hard work. It will take everybody's effort, but it's the right thing to do and will make a difference once again for our most vulnerable and marginalized students. The third thing I want to talk about and is very important is as we move forward, our goal of improving fiscal reporting and transparency and preparing for what's coming in the next biennium. As you know, COVID-19 has bludgeoned the Oregon economy. It's impacted school funding. As just a reminder, the, we were so excited back in late February and early March that we were counting on 100% of SIA funds and that's been reduced to 30%. And as we look forward to the next biennium, there appears to be, and the word is, that we're looking at somewhere between a $3.5 billion and $4 billion shortfall. And we need to prepare for that. We cannot be shortsighted and I know this board is not shortsighted and it's given me some specific goals on how to address this. I think the hiring of Mr. Schofield was a great step in improving our needed fiscal change to budgeting, reporting, and transparency. And although COVID-19 has impacted our economy and the financial outcome may remain bleak, I'm committed to ensuring that our expenditures are not exceeding our revenues. I want to ensure that we have a 5% contingency and we have a plan to build and our financial reserves to prepare for what's coming for not just the next two years, it's going to be the next four to six years. I know I've had some significant and complex conversations with many of board members in understanding where we're going as a state and where districts are going, but we're committed to that. The other thing I want to point out that as of today, and once again, we will not know till the actual start of school and till our 10-day drop, which will be on the 28th of September, but as of today, we just got word in looking at this day last year, we're down approximately 1,100 students. The primary, the primary numbers are residing, about 800 of those are at the elementary level and the numbers increase as you go down. Significant number of kindergarteners. Now, we're starting school later. We're trying to do everything we can in communication with folks to get folks registered, but as I talk to my counterparts across the state, this is a trend that everybody is seeing. They are, some parents are looking for other alternatives due to safety factors. There's a lot of reasons, but just 1,100 students, just some quick math, that's about $9 million. And we need to be prepared for that. I know our Human Resources Department has been working day and night, working with our Teaching and Learning Department and our operations side as we prepare for this. And I think while we have some short-term goals, we have to also have some long-term goals out there and be looking down the road. So we are going to get through this and we are going to be prepared as we can move forward. The last thing I want to talk to you about is we are excited. We are in the final round of hiring our HR person that's going to look at our recruitment, hiring, and maintaining our diverse staff. And we should have a successful candidate. I'm hoping within the next two weeks, we had some very phenomenal candidates. We also used internal and external stakeholders in this hiring process and would really like to thank those external stakeholders who gave up their time. We had parents, we had business people from the community. We had BIPOC staff and BIPOC community members on it. So we're really excited about that. And as soon as that person gets on, we really want to sit down with that person and as a team, set some goals for staff to be able to deliver to the board and what are some, what are some challenging goals but achievable goals in diversifying and maintaining our staff. And finally, I just want to give a big shout out to our communications departments. We are in the process of preparing 16,000 return-to-school kits. Every student who qualifies for a free and reduced lunch will receive a, one of these kits. And the communications department, along with our families, our faith-based organizations, service groups, and businesses have went above and beyond and be, and I want our BAF help organization, they've raised somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, of $75,000 in order to do this. And so I think that's a phenomenal, phenomenal aspiration. So we will ensure that any and all of our students qualifying for free and reduced lunch will be able to have access to one of these kits. And then finally, in talking with our communications director, we are also opening our closed closet. It used to be open on one day a week. It's now open four days a week. And we're using volunteers and some dedicated staff time, but we feel that we need to really go above and beyond. These are tough times for our families and also Shelley told me to put in, the closed closet is looking for volunteers. If you happen to have some time, anybody out there would like to donate to our closed closet. So that's all I have at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you Superintendent Grodding. Appreciate that. And now for the thing that we're all waiting for, a report on our comprehensive distance learning. We have many staff people from Teaching and Learning that will be joining us, but we'll start off with Deputy Superintendent Jenny Hensman.
Good evening. Thank you for being here and School Board Members and Superintendent Grodding. Today is a really exciting day and part of that has to do with, this is the first day that our teachers come back to work. And I think it's such a significant time. I was a classroom teacher for 20 years and I have to say that there isn't one fall that I ever faced what we're facing today. And with the pandemic and the return to school, it's something our teachers have never even come close to experiencing how to do this type of learning. So a huge shout out to our teachers for taking the time to do a great deal of learning over the next two weeks. These first two weeks are set up for some intense learning on everything from our, our management systems to our core curriculum, to our anti-racism discussions. All the next two weeks are going to be involved in this learning. Our team continues to be hard at work and we have done everything from curriculum plans for our secondary and our elementary students along with how we're going to do our daily schedules, our calendars, our professional development in all of these areas. Obviously a big lift, but our teachers and our community deserve that. Tonight, you're going to be hearing from many of our Teaching and Learning administrators that are engaged in this work. The part that I'm really excited about is Danielle Hudson will be sharing with you our behavioral health and wellness plans. And we know that this is probably one of the most important areas. We want to make sure that our staff is healthy and our kids are healthy. So really looking forward to that, along with our multilingual department and our SPED department as well. So we will kick it off. Brian Seega is our administrator for Curriculum Instruction and he will be, he has led this effort along with all of our team. So he will be kind of giving us a few updates to start with and then we'll go right into our behavioral health and wellness. Take it away, Brian.
Thank you very much. Thank you Board Chair Timchuk, Board Members, Superintendent Grodding, Staff, Community Members, everyone that's, everyone that's watching and listening from afar. My name's Brian Seega. I'm the administrator for Curriculum Instruction Assessment and have been able to help facilitate a lot of the return-to-school processes so far. And I'm extremely proud of our staff, extremely proud of our students. Like Jenny said, we welcomed our teachers back today for their first official day back for the 2020-2021 school year as well as many of our classified staff are coming back today. Some came back last week and some are coming back shortly. And so we're really excited to see how these plans go into action and what kind of service we're able to provide to our students and to our community. Like Danielle said, or excuse me, like Jenny said, we're going to focus today's update mostly on Student Services, Behavioral Health and Wellness, on Special Education, and on updates from Multilingual Department, in addition, an update from Flex. Just before, I'll just be brief, one quick update. I just want to make sure the board is aware of, every Monday, the Oregon Health Authority releases the COVID-19 metrics. The two metrics that are most significant for us to pay attention to are those, one is the weekly number of cases related as a ratio to every 100,000 residents and that's by county. So, and then the other is the percent of tests that were positive. For both of those, what we're looking for, for the cases per 100,000, we're looking for a county, for Washington County, a total in the week of 10 or less cases per 100,000 and at that positive tests rate of under five. And so today, the newest numbers, Washington County went up a little bit from last week. We're right now, we're at 36 cases per 100,000. So we're, you know, about three and a half times higher than we need to be to welcome all of our students back. And it will, to start actually a hybrid model, our percent of positive cases is reduced down to 3.6%. And so just to put into context, those are the metrics that we do want to be keeping our eye on. They're updated every Monday and we're happy to keep the board updated on those as well. So with that, I'm proud to turn it over to Dr. Hudson, our Executive Administrator for Student Services, and she'll be leading us through the first part of our presentation.
Good evening Board Chair Timchuk, Board Members, and Superintendent Grodding. It's really great to actually have this opportunity to talk about the work of our, in our Office of Intervention and Prevention. So I thank you all for the time tonight. I want to start by thanking my Behavioral Health and Wellness Team at the district level. Vli Green, Leslie Rogers, Amy Baker, and Chris D'Amiano. They have been working extensively, tirelessly, definitely for the last two weeks since they've reported back, but also in the summer, really trying to think about how we're going to address the needs of our students and comprehensive distance learning and our staff. So, you know, students, staff, and family because it's all three that we need to be thinking about. So starting this year, and Brian, I'll have you shift that slide for me. We have decided, or we are implementing across all schools, Behavioral Health and Wellness Teams. In some schools, they had different names. Sometimes they were called care teams. They would be called kid chat teams, a various kind of compilation of different names. And we have adopted Behavioral Health and Wellness because we want that team to be universal. It doesn't matter if you're at Raleigh Park or you're at Bethany, you're at Meadow Park, or you're at Stoller, or you're at Aloha, or Mountainside. You will have a Behavioral Health Team, which will be consisted of your, at the elementary level, it's your school counselors, it's your student success coach, it's your district social worker, it's your district nurse, and then also collaborating with the school psychologist in the building. At the middle and high school level, it is looking at their team has all the same things with the exception of the student success coach because we don't have those at the secondary level. And in order to make this move, one of the things that I want to say is although we've had some, you know, sound information about our budget and also the lack of funding in SIA, we did welcome 12 new social workers to our system last week. And so my team has been working with them through New Staff Academy onboarding them. So even as we enter this, kind of this ray, like this, this light shining is that we did add some social workers to our system. And what that looks like is we will have a full-time social worker at every comprehensive high school. We will have a half-time social worker at our options and middle schools. And then our district social workers will solely be working with middle, or with elementary schools this year. So our social worker workforce at the district level is going from five social workers to 5.45 to work with the elementary schools. So as we look at this need for capacity to work with engaging students and their families, we do have increased staffing going into this year. So the real focus with our Behavioral Health So the real focus with our behavioral health and wellness teams this fall in particular is trying to identify those students who are not engaging um in comprehensive distance learning. So the starting point is definitely looking to see tracking the enrollment of students from last year and those that are still showing up on our rosters but aren't showing up to or checking into learning. Um making sure that we're making their teachers are starting as a touch point to make contact with those families. But we have then developed a universal referral system. So as a teacher, you know, my, we have built into the workday student and family connection time, particularly on Wednesdays. So that's really this time for teachers to be connecting um with students and families. Now, in some cases, they may try to connect and still get no response. So you know, maybe they're emailing or phone calling or they're trying to set up a Zoom conference and they're still getting no feedback and response. So that is really when they'll make this referral to this team and that the work of that team is then to build an intervention plan. So it's trying to gather as much information about the student and the family that maybe staff already know so that we can try to say like, what do we think the barrier is? And then their goal as a unified team is to go out and again, look at things like traditional email, phone call and Zoom conference, but then also scheduled home visits. So how do we set up visits when we're going? Now, we know that if we can't reach someone via email or phone or Zoom conference, we might not be able to then schedule a um a home visit. So we're preparing our staff to be able to do unscheduled home visits, to be able to um connect with families and to kind of figure out what the barriers. And then based on that connection, they can build an intervention plan. So it's is the issue that they don't have um, you know, wa wireless connectivity? Is the issue something around housing related? Or is it food insecurity or is it daycare related? You know, how do we show students that, you know, you may be caring for your brother or sister in the mornings and so you can't join synchronous learning at that time? But guess what? Those lessons are now available in asynchronous. So you could log on at seven P M. and still do your lessons. So that is really what their role this fall is going to be is about trying to find those kids and connecting them and then identifying what those barriers are and then building a plan to try to overcome it. And so we've built kind of this whole flow chart about how, you know, the the teacher works with the student. It is unsuccessful. They make this universal referral. So we're adopting the referral district wide. That team then responds in conjunction with the classroom teacher, connects with the family and then one to two weeks circles back. Because we know that we may make connection with the family and the student, but if we don't continue monitoring that, they could drop off again. So that's really kind of the big work for them this fall around our behavioral health and wellness teams. Okay, so then the next area is around social emotional learning. So we wanted to make sure that students had continued access to social emotional learning um throughout their school day. And one of those um ti- times we're really leaning on Wednesdays is an opportunity to do synchronous lessons. So at the elementary level, our counselors and student success coaches and in collaboration with our district nurses and our district social workers will be doing delivering synchronous cell lessons every week to support students. So that can be a range of activities that they're doing. The elementary, they'll be really looking at Harmony, our Harmony kits, which we've adopted. They talk about characteristics, feelings and those pieces. But we want to make sure that we're touching base with students around their kind of mental health needs in the system. And then additionally, they'll be doing small group, um like small, small groups with certain kids that might need a little extra time processing. And then they'll be offering parent trainings and parent sessions so that parents can access them. Um we're really excited this year because at the secondary level, um we will be working with um it with our advisories that are happening. And what will happen is one at a minimum, one advisory class. Um each student will get in one of their advisory classes, a counselor or a social worker will come in and they will be doing a um a presentation on suicide prevention. So we have never been really able to get to the point, other than students who are in their health classes, to talk about suicide prevention and intervention. And so we're really looking at this opportunity through advisory to get our um our counselors and our social workers through a rotation and advisory to discuss how can we can address suicide prevention. We know in um one of the things about prevention is actually talking about it and acknowledging it and then being knowing students have resources. Um the other thing that the behavioral health and wellness team did was they curated a series of ten lessons. And really, it's ten plus. They were charged with ten, but they did more of social emotional learning lessons that will be delivered by the classroom teachers. So we know that some people, some teachers really have a skill with connecting with students, really kind of having that opening, that launch to the learning that is about community-based. And we know other teachers struggle with that. I know as, you know, someone who leads professional development, I struggle with the touchy-feely parts. And so I have to be reminded that, oh, we don't have to get right to business. So what this team did was curated all of these lessons. So then teachers can then just decide when they're going to do them in their sequence. And we know that in every class, we're addressing kind of that community-based wellness for all students. Um and then again, they are going to be offering parent training opportunities to assist families with routines and kind of structures for how do you build a learning environment in your home. And then lastly, for this team, um we're really talking about staff staff wellness. So Brian, I'll have you do the next one. Um and so this is really about how we offered um the last couple of weeks, professional development to our building administrators to help them start to think about how they're going to address staff wellness in their building. So people are really stressed right now, you know, everyone's got a lot going on. They're worried about um how are they going to work from home? Are they going to get COVID? Do I have a family member who's sick? Um what am I going to do about daycare? It's all the things we're all kind of worrying about. So one of that, th- those things is we need to make sure that we take some time to address kind of if we want students to be regulated, we need to have staff who feel regulated. Because a dysregulated adult can't help um regulate a a dysregulated student. So we're really going to take this opportunity to try to help our staff kind of reflect on where they're at. You know, we talk a lot about, you know, uh with kids, you know, are is are you blowing your top and those kind of things? So as a staff member, how do we do that? When your Zoom doesn't work, how how do you handle that in that situation, although it's frustrating? So that'll be one of their focuses of working with their teams. Um and then during pre-service week, this week and Labor Day week, we are um we are pushing out information so that staff have access to some of those um wellness uh to professional development opportunities. So I'm going to pause here before we get into limited in-person instruction just to see if there's any questions about the three areas I just talked about.
Okay, thank you. Um it looks like we have a question from uh Susan. Go ahead, Susan.
So thank you, Danielle. I appreciate your presentation. Um so actually, I have a few questions. Uh one is more of the definition of a social worker when it comes to um the school district. Are they um at all um therapists or are they in a different role? Or are they kind of un- all encompassing?
So we don't, I s- I see what you're saying. We don't employ them as therapists, but they can run m- mental health groups. So they can run, because that is their practice. So they are mental health providers. So they can run one-to-one sessions with students. They can do small groups. They have all of that skill set and will be used to do that.
Okay, thank you. That was, you know, I should have asked that actually months ago and I never did. So um the other questions I have, one is um, you know, for going into these uh students' home who, you know, who aren't getting connected and you find out that um one is just really difficult for them, for whatever reason, to um find a good space in their home for um educational purposes. Have we worked out a system for those kids where just being at home? You know, even if, and you know, this would be tr- true for homeless or houseless um students especially. How we're going to help those kids get connected and um be part of a class?
So are you asking, ha- have we kind of looked at other locations where students can go to learn if their house is not conducive to that learning environment?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that um at this time, we don't have a uh a specific plan around that. Because as you can imagine, there are some nuances about sending um district staff into um into homes or into like going to the community space. Um really because of things like making sure that the safety protocols that have to be in place in our blueprint. It's really hard to then make sure that those same safety precautions are put into place in a neighborhood setting. So I know that's something that we're continuing to, you know, discuss and discuss with neighboring districts about what they're doing. Um and I think Carl has a comment that he might be able to fit fill in on this. So I'm gonna pivot to Carl.
Yes, uh Susan, great question. Um we've had a number of inquiries from our faith partners um to do exactly that, to be able to provide a safe space where students would be able to potentially gain access to the internet. And quite honestly, to be able to have a space that's potentially warm when our, when our weather changes and everything else. Um while we can't necessarily direct students to those, um it's something we are working through because we can't accept the liability at that point. So we're working with our faith partners potentially in that and there may be others uh that come up in the near future. So certainly on our horizon and we definitely want to to have a focus in that area.
So I mean, I guess I would tie that to, I know that everybody's concerned about learning pods and, you know, the accessibility to uh the barrier that would be to um lower income students or, you know, students of color or both. Um and that might be taking that barrier away for those students. But what you're saying is like, we may not be able to, I want to say, communicate this out to families because of liability issues. So it's like
No, it's not so much the communication piece. It's about our staff being involved and actively involved at potentially a place of worship and providing a level of service.
Okay.
There's got to be a separation there. So it may be that we're in a place to be able to say, these are places available in our area. They'll be able to gain access into the internet, so on and so forth. But our staff can't be the ones there delivering a service.
Understand that and I appreciate that. I just like to 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 know that there's a possibility for these kids to find a place. So I'm really happy about that. And it kind of ties to my last question, which is about, you know, and and this goes for teachers as well as students. Um i- i- and all of us really, but the isolation that um we're all feeling and students are feeling and they need that social connection. Is there any potential to help with connecting children socially, even if it's just via Zoom or whatever it is?
We've seen some really interesting um and I feel like innovative opportunities to kind of engage students. So I've had um I had a speech language pathologist who ran da- dance parties every Friday for students to come to. And so she would dance and the students would come. At one of um one of our high schools, at South Ridge High School, um we have this wonderful teacher, Lee Brown there. And so she knew her, her students wanted an opportunity to engage socially. But you know, she can't, you know, give everyone each other's phone numbers and those things. So she set up Zoom, like a Zoom call and she was there and she was there, but she would step out. So she was monitoring, but her picture wasn't there or anything like that. And so she couldn't hear the the students talking and, you know, having a social interaction, but it was like during lunchtime. So they were eating lunch and her role was really just to set up the Zoom so that the class could be there. So we've seen a range of people trying to figure out how to do online games like Kahoot where our kids can come on and they can like practice and play games together and, you know, um true or false games. And so we, we've definitely been trying to push those kind of activities out and encouraging sta- uh staff and students to find time to be able to do that within this virtual world.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your answers. Um I know they're not easy and I hope that we're pushing out the social part of this to, I mean, and hopefully schools are being um proactive with that. Because that is a big piece of this, especially for kids going into sixth grade or ninth grade and, you know, the early kindergarten and first grade kids who have not really been integrated into that particular school.
And and it's hard, you know, as a parent of an incoming eighth grader, trying to balance the amount of screen time your child has and school time and you're trying to juggle um your own work, it i- it is a challenge. So you know, it's really trying to find ways that, yes, it's screen time, but how do you make that interactive and fun? So and then it looks like Tom, you had a question?
Yeah, thanks Danielle. A couple of questions. The the first question, kind of building on Susan's word proactive there. Um I'm wondering about proactive community outreach um in terms of getting communications to our families about what's going on with school um and having a presence in the community so that people know that there are social workers and there are people in our system who are there to help them. And if you guys have any plans of visiting like apartment complexes or targeting places where um some of our low-income students live, making sure that we're taking care of our immigrant communities, our BIPOC community. Um and anything that we can do to make sure that people know what's going on before that disconnect happens, right?
So I I'm going to actually ask uh Toshiko Maurizio. Um I think you're on here to talk a little bit about what the multilingual department has done around that. Um but I also know that Ellie and the communications team has done an amazing job of really getting information out to families in a way that I feel like, whether it's written or it's video in a way that kind of connects with people. Um but in particular, I know that Toshiko has had like her, her staff really going out, particularly for our um our bilingual families and who may not have English as kind of their dominant language, working with them and connecting with them to see kind of, you know, do they know um when school starts, what that's going to look like? Um and and then I know at buildings, they're really trying to figure out um how do we send staff into our neighborhoods? Are those things to do supply drop-offs or do some kind of dropouts and in a manner that connects with families and families feel supported? Toshiko or Shelley, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, so I um so this is Toshiko. Um hi, Tom. So I um I do have a few slides on family engagement. Um should we, um Brian, do you want to get to that now? And I can talk a bit about how we are um engaging our our
Can I, can I just real quickly maybe get to Ann's question? Because I think it maybe has to do with Danielle just presented. And then we can go into um the outreach. Is that okay?
Yeah, Becky, I have two questions that are more specific to to what Danielle just presented too. I I'm happy to hold off on um getting the answer from Toshiko until we reach that part of the presentation. But I do have two questions that are kind of more specifically targeted at Danielle. Um one of them is capacity. So um I haven't gotten hard numbers back from the number of students that were engaged with learning in the spring. But anecdotally, uh the number of students that were disengaged um look quite large. And I'm wondering, are our care teams in a position to be able to ramp up and deal with that much? Um I guess contacting the families, outreach to families, everything else. Um if we're looking at thirty percent or forty percent of our students who may not be showing up.
I think one of the things we did when we were building the schedule, um so there is planned time for teachers, but there's also student and family connection time built in. And so that intent of that time is actually not to just rely on your behavioral health and wellness team, but to also get your teachers to be the ones who are going to make that con- contact. So what I would say is I have amazing behavioral health and wellness team members, counselors, social workers, school psychs, they are wonderful. But really, that the biggest relationship is between the student and the teacher. So when we built the schedule and kind of we're building those pieces, we then built in that time for them to also do the outreach. And then we are also, any person who's going to do like, we're, we're opening up the ability to do home visits to larger number of people. Traditionally, we've kind of really just looked at our social workers to be able to do that and some of our counselors. So we're building a training system so that any staff member with a partner can go and then, you know, go and see a student. So it's really trying to build the capacity with um extending that to our paraeducators and our teachers and not solely relying on our behavioral health and wellness team. Because honestly, they may not have a relationship with a student. And so it's like, how do we leverage the people who do have relationships with kids?
Great. And last question is about homeless students. When I was looking at one of the previous slides where you're talking about the different ways that you begin the engagement with the family and the student, you know, your phone, email. Those are all the things that our homeless students may not have. So how, how are you guys planning differently to engage our homeless students and make sure that we're, we're taking care of them from day one?
So we have a help center. So as you guys know, and so they're, one of the, the big jobs of the people who are there is kind of locating the students who are experiencing houselessness and kind of figuring out where they are. So where are they residing to some extent? So then instead of a home visit, it might be that I know the student is living in a car on, you know, Allen. And so how do you set up somewhat like two people to go to that car and try to connect with that student? So a big part of with, you know, kind of tracking our homeless youth is trying to figure out where are they located or where could we find them? And, and then who are the people that people know so that they can find people? So we've talked about that in CDL, if you have a student not engaging, you don't just start, stop with the phone number. That's like their emergency contact, right? You go down the list of all the people that are there and you try then to say, do you know where this student is? Do you know how we can find them? So it's more of a like, we don't just go with what we have, but what kind of kind of like an investigation to try to find the student. And so we know that our help center is integral and working with our behavioral health and wellness teams to then try to identify the students and get the supports to them.
Thanks Danielle. I appreciate the answers.
So why don't we go Anne with your question and then we can let Toshiko speak on the next part.
Danielle, I'm excited to see a lot of what you're presenting. Somewhat because I think it is work that we will continue to see when the pandemic ends and it will. So the kind of coursework that's being developed, both for staff as well as for students, I think is gonna have a long-term positive impact for everyone. I was curious about it being delivered during advisory. And it made me wonder, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for Brian, but what is the boots on the ground attendance gonna actually look like? How do we incentivize kids to show up for a class that, you know, they're not being graded in, you know, but that still adds value? How are we making sure that we connect with kids in these pre-scheduled times?
Brian, do you want to weigh in a little bit on that?
Yeah, I, I, sure. And, and I think that's a great question. I think there's probably two ways to approach that answer. One would just be the value of the class and the value of having that. You know, let's take a high school teacher, for example, even on the four by four, a high school teacher is gonna have somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty students in there. You know, kind of caseload it at once. And so if you break that down to the advisory, where maybe the advisory class is only gonna have about thirty students on at once. And here's one of them with me now. Have that, have that, those, those, have that teacher who has that connection with the student. So we can guarantee that every student has at least one, you know, positive adult role model. And then and then now you can see what all of our teachers are gonna be going through. But then the other part of that, Anne, I think is one of the pieces we built in, one of the things our principals have been working with right now with our teachers is when that advisory class happens, and let's say this is my advisory, the people on this screen and ten of you aren't here today. Part of that student and family connection time on the day advisory happens is for, for me to make that specific outreach to those students. So it just makes it a, a kind of a smaller group of students for that teacher to be able to go ahead and connect with on the day. To flip it, you're right. There's not a GPA value associated with it and there's not a, you know, considerable like graduation requirement associated with it. So it really is some of that intrinsic value and then being able to stay connected to the students.
All right. And then just clarifying, is that AT or are we having separate advisory classes as well?
So it's embedded into AT except for on Wednesdays. And there's a bit of a nuance in that, but with Wednesdays being primarily time for students to engage with asynchronous and applied learning to ensure that every student has a synchronous opportunity every day and to make sure that that kid is connecting with school every day. There's an additional advisory period also happening on Wednesdays. But other than that, it's embedded into AT and almost all of our school schedules.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have a question from, for Danielle? Or do we want to go into?
I do have another slide and we can break and then I can come back and that's totally fine. If we can pause, you don't have to hear me for that much longer. Okay, well, I'll just go. This is limited in-person instruction. So one of the things is in the blueprint that we got, ODE kind of changed their directive and added kind of this idea that regardless of meeting the criteria, the metrics that we could offer limited in-person instruction to our emerging bilinguals, our students experiencing disability and students in CTE programs. And they just said that we had to verify that there was no confirmed cases among any school staff or students fourteen days leading up to the start of doing in-person instructions. And it talked about, you know, we had to do a blueprint and we had to comply with any cohort sizes requirements about that. So we really kind of jumped into that in order to be able to see if that is something. Sorry, that's my kid. I mean, seeing if there is something around, could we make this work? And so the next slide kind of talks about our reservations about moving forward with in-person. So one, we have really inadequate guidance from the Department of Education for who should qualify. They don't have any metrics for how do you say this kid gets it over that kid or those things. And then they say very clearly that you can't do it just based on their language or their disability or their age. So that was confusing. Additionally, there was very limited information or guidance on how we could track or monitor the fourteen days of negative COVID testing. So that, you know, are we serving people and making sure that it's clear how do we affirm that no one has had COVID in the fourteen days? Additionally, attendance groups are limited to two, which includes students transportation cohort. So we'd be unable to serve a student who receives both special education service and ELD services. Because we couldn't do both of them and their transportation cohort. We'd have to choose. We'd have to say, oh, we're gonna give you your ELD services or we're gonna give you your special ed services. And then additionally, our CTE courses are pretty large. And so when we start looking at cohort sizes, when we talk about CTE, that gets greater than the size that we can have for a cohort of students. So then which students in CTE get to access CTE limited in person and which ones don't? So I think one of the things that we found, I was moderating a meeting with the Department of Ed talking about limited in-person instruction. And it was very, what they explained to us is that if we wanted to do limited in-person, I like to use Westview as an example. Originally, the, the thought was you would only have to have the fourteen days negative COVID for the staff who were going to be delivering the instruction and the students who are gonna be participating. What they explained to us is that you have to have all the students in the school be clean of COVID for fourteen days and all the staff, regardless of if they were gonna be on site or not. So when I think about Westview, I'm like, so I would need to affirm that all twenty-two hundred students at Westview High School are COVID free for fourteen days before they come and all the staff. And it just ultimately, we didn't have any means for being able to collect that data and move forward. And then to be able to assure families that yes, our schools are COVID free, your kids can come on site. The other thing that was a factor is it was limited to hours per day. So it wasn't like we were looking at a full day of instruction for these students. It was only two, two hours per day. And so when we started to look at numbers of how many you could bring and how we would clean in the middle, it got really overwhelming. So in the end, because of these obstacles, and I believe you, like, believe me, we do want students on site when we can get them there safely, students and staff on site. But when we started really looking into it, we wanted to really continue to monitor the metrics and kind of, and build our implementation plan for the future so that when we feel like that we have the data we need to safely bring students and staff back on site, we could go ahead and do that. So what I would say is we are doing, one of the things is we are building an optional blueprint for CAP Center. Because we will be offering special education evaluations. We're talking one-on-one with a tester and a student. So we've been doing that all summer. So we will continue to be able to do special education evaluations. And then Toshiko has recently got, received guidance from the Department of Education, how they can do some language assessments. So we will start kind of entering that world of limited in-person instruction, but it's really evaluation. And so we're building the operational blueprints for CAP Center. And then eventually we're trying to think about some other sites that we can have eval opportunities at.
Are there any questions by anything that Danielle just said or do we? Anybody have any questions? Okay, Toshiko, you're up.
All right, Brian, do you want to go to slide seventeen and then maybe we'll just flip special ed and multilingual department? Right, thank you, Brian. So good evening, board chair. I'm Tim Chek, board members and superintendent Grodding. I am just really excited to share all the work the multilingual department has been doing in the summer to prepare for, for the new school year with distance learning. And I know that your question was specific around family engagement, but I'm gonna start out talking a bit more about how we, how we're preparing, how we prepare for family engagement. So the first thing that we did was, we, the department held eight different family engagement sessions to gather feedback from our community in the spring. And we asked them three specific questions. What went well with distance learning or remote learning in the spring? What didn't go so well? And then what would they choose? What would they select if we had in-person, hybrid and all distance learning? And so we received a lot of great feedback from our families. The top three, I would say is that they, they wanted to receive information about the new school year, about distance learning or return to school in a language that they understand. They felt that a lot of the information they received in the spring didn't really come to them in a language they understood. And so they, and also that the language was very academic. So they wanted us to try to reach, reach their population. So that's something that we have been working with, community involvement with, and they've just been doing an awesome job and making sure that the information that is being pushed out about return to school and distance learning is really accessible with, by our families. The other feedback we received was that there were so many different platforms that teachers were using. Some were using Zoom, Hangouts, Canvas, Seesaw. And so there were, they wanted us to try to hone in and, and figure out just, and choose a few platforms to use. And so our future ready department, our teaching and learning department did try to do that. So for elementary, they'll be using Seesaw and upper grades might be using Canvas. Secondary is all gonna be using Canvas. So we really tried to take that feedback for our families and hone in and just use a few platforms that our families can actually learn. Then the last one was that secondary students, there were so many courses and it was just so overwhelming for a lot of our students. There were too many classes and a lot of the work was being pushed out. And there wasn't a lot of synchronous instruction where the students can actually learn what they were, what they were doing. And so so I think we did a great job. The high schools changed their schedule to a four by fours to make it more manageable for, for the families and for the students. So that's how we started our feedback sessions by getting feedback from the families and then pushing out that feedback throughout the, throughout the system. And then we helped teacher, we brought in some teacher groups during the summer. So we had some dual language teachers working during, during the summer to help us with, to prepare for distance learning. We also had, we brought in some ELD teachers at the elementary level and the secondary level to help us to create guidance documents for all the different levels, elementary, middle and high. And so that's what we worked on. We worked on creating guidance documents for all of our schools. So that, which outlined the program models that we recommend schools implement in order to meet the state and federal requirements. And then we also plan for a series of professional development opportunities that staff will have access to this week as well as next week. And so going into family engagement to start that work off, what we did was, well, let me first just highlight and celebrate our, our community involvement department, our communications department. So Shelley and her team just pushed out, if you haven't seen it yet, it's a family toolkit that is on the website. And it has so much information in there that will be available for families. And they did such a great job of just curating all the important information from all the different departments. And to put it on this website so that families can just have one place to go. It also includes a number of videos and we've been working collaboratively with them to see how we could make the return to school information accessible to our families. So that's kind of something that we're working on as well in our department that's in process right now is how are we translating and modifying the return to school information to make it culturally and linguistically appropriate and accessible for our non-white and non-English speaking families. We also working with the community involvement department on producing the district videos in multiple languages. For example, how to use technology tools that we're pushing out to all of our families like Seesaw and Canvas as well as Zoom and all of the other platforms. We also are sharing interpreters' contact information. So we have all of our bilingual facilitators that speak the different languages and they have phone numbers that families can call to ask questions. And so those, all of those phone numbers, most schools have a poster, it's called a language poster with all of their numbers so that if families go to the schools, they can see this poster. And it has the contact number for all of our facilitators. They call the number. They can have, actually speak to them or they can leave a message and our interpreters will call them back. The other thing we're doing is that we have bilingual community liaisons that are based out in the secondary schools. And they continually support our non, non-English speaking families in numerous areas. We're receiving a lot of questions. We actually, we had an issue with our phone routing and we came back, our staff came back on August seventeenth. And there were hundreds and hundreds of, of messages from our, from our community asking questions around enrollment. What are some of the available resources? How do you access ParentView? And so our staff have been really, really busy since they've returned, answering a lot of these questions for our families. And we are also pushing out and promoting the use of TalkingPoints. If you haven't seen it, it's an app that is available. It's currently free for educators and for, for administrators to use. It is an app that allows staff and families to text each other directly. So it's a really good app that staff members can use if they want to push out information or if they want to just ask families a quick question in a language that they understand. So I believe the app has a hundred plus different languages that staff members can access. So we actually had our summer school staff using TalkingPoints and then they provided feedback to us on how accessible it was for the families. And then we also pushed this out to administrators through our administrator newsletter. We were trying to promote the use of an app so that our families can actually communicate directly with our, our staff members. It's always a great way to build relationships with our families. They really appreciate hearing directly from school staff. And the big project that we engage in, we did this in the spring and we're gonna do it again. It's called a family check-in plan. And we have each of our staff members, including our community liaisons, calling each family that have indicated they need an interpreter in their enrollment form. So they all, we all divide up the responsibilities. And they also call our families, our migrant families and as well as our American Indian, Alaska native families. And basically we have a script that they use that's very, that's consistent with everybody. And basically what we try to do is we ensure that families have a trusted connection with a district staff member that speaks their home language. You'd be surprised how, how much our families, especially those that are new to the country, really appreciate getting a phone call from somebody that actually speaks that language. It's just a way to break down those barriers and it's a good way for them to connect with the district. So we, when we make our calls, we ask questions like, did you complete your enrollment verification? Do you have any questions around distance learning? Do you have internet? Do you have a tablet or do you have your Chromebook? And do you have any other needs that we, that we can support you with? And so they, and they document all of this. We have a spreadsheet that we use. It's gonna be divided up into the different schools. So that school staff can also see which families we've contacted. And they'll know if we were able to make contact with them or if we're in prog, in progress or if we And they'll know if we were able to make contact with them or if we're in prog, in progress, or if we still need to call them back. And so we, we will push that out. That is going to be starting next week. Calling every family just to make sure that they're ready for, for distance learning. I also have to mention that our teaching and learning, there are a group of principals, I think that Kayla was working with to develop parent academy sessions and which I think is going on this week. And so you had, we had principals from different levels, elementary, middle and high, that developed a parent academy training and which they're delivering this week. That's for our English-speaking families. But we also will be providing some parent academy type training sessions for our families that speak languages other than, other than English. So yeah, that's what we have for you. And yeah, do you have any questions regarding our multilingual learners and our family engagement plan?
It looks like Donna has a question. And then Tom, do you still have a question you want to ask or did it get answered? Okay, so Donna.
Well, first I just want to commend the team. I mean, this is a lot of great work, a lot of good thought went into it and consideration. And I know it's kind of hard because we're in a new world order to think of every eventuality. And I'm sure that you probably will miss some, but it seems pretty thorough to me. I do have just a general question which could be answered by anyone, perhaps Toshiko or Danielle or Brian, about potentially the use of volunteers. I know I have received some emails from parents who are, who are interested in trying to do what they can to help students, especially those who are underserved, navigate the system or at least provide with some additional assistance. And I don't know whether you intend to, or even if it's possible, to make way to allow people who are interested in volunteering during this time.
Hey Donna, I think I'll take this question. Since we handle the volunteer services, we are opening up virtual volunteering. And so teachers are going to be able to utilize volunteers in their virtual classrooms. With one caveat, that when students go into a breakout session, we're requiring there to be two adult volunteers in that breakout room for obvious reasons, protection. And so the teachers will be managing that, but it will be open for some, some virtual volunteering. And hopefully when we get back into school, then we can see parents back in the classroom again.
Well, that's great. I'm happy to hear that. Thank you so much, Shelley.
So Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Toshiko. I appreciate all the information about reaching out to our multilingual families and students. When I was talking about the different types of outreach, like outlined, you know, homeless students and multilingual families. I want to make sure that what doesn't get lost in the conversation is our BIPOC families, which is not the same as our multilingual families. And so I'm wondering what kind of outreach we have planned there and how we plan to do that in like a culturally responsive way. And that, maybe that's not Toshiko. I don't, you know, anybody can chime in here.
I think, I mean, I would just, I would just share that the work that the community involvement has been doing, outreach to that community, if they, if, if they are not identified themselves as, as needing an interpreter, meaning that they are, they don't speak a language other than English, then I believe that they can access a lot of the parent engagement that the schools have been putting on as well as our community involvement. The information and the outreach that we're providing is making sure that those that are bilingual and speak a different language receive that same information, but in the language that they understand. So that's kind of where there's a crossroads, but we kind of work together in serving our, our diverse families.
And I think, Tom, your, your point is really important. And I think as we continue to work with our BIPOC organizations and the community and continue to build that relationship, they're going to be a huge resource in making sure that we are reaching a larger net of families, not just and families that are non-native English speakers, but then also our BIPOC families. So that they don't not, they're not ignored in terms of making sure that we're making a coordinated effort to reach them.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this plan and I can see like lots and lots of thought and it's very much appreciated.
So Tom, if I may, this is Carl. I think we owe you as a board and yourself, that's a great question. We owe kind of a separate report in terms of what we're doing in terms of outreach for BIPOC, our BIPOC community. Not only how we're engaging, but also how we're engaging in families and community who have been reluctant to have a voice previously. So I know certainly Patrick McCreary, any number of staff here are all participating and, and joining in in that conversation. So I think that that's a more in-depth presentation that we can give to the board.
Thanks, Carl.
Susan, you had a question?
Yeah, it's a question about how many students are in the multilingual world and how many of them, I mean, what was the percentage of students that participated in the spring that were part of the multilingual?
Yeah, so those that are English language learners, we are about 12% as a district. So about, our numbers last year were about forty-eight, sixty, four thousand eight hundred and sixty students that are identified as English learners. And for, but we also serve, because we manage the translation and interpretation in, for the, for the district. We also serve about hundred and three plus different languages. So all of the families that have indicated they, they speak a language other than English. But there's, there are some students that may not necessarily be English learners, but they, their parents do speak another language. So that's, you know, six or seven thousand students if you, if you look at the, that group. And as far as the spring, when we, we had our family check-in plan, we were able to reach majority of our students. There were, I would say probably like five hundred students, maybe between three sixty to five hundred students that we were not able to connect with for, for a variety of reasons. We've made multiple calls. It could be that the families left and did not answer the phones or they, they, they moved back to their home country.
Okay, and I believe we have one more presentation from your group with Kelly, right Danielle?
Yes, correct. I'd like to introduce Kelly Raff. She's our new administrator for special education. And so she'll be here to talk more about special, special education and what that's going to look like in CDL.
Thanks Danielle. Good evening, Board Chair. Tim Chuck, Board Member, Superintendent Grodding, Staff and Community Members. Thank you so much for having me here today. Brian, if you want to go to the next slide that has more of the content. The Special Ed Department has been working hard all summer long on developing plans to support our students in special education during comprehensive distance learning. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our special ed staff, so our admin team, our TOSSAs and certified staff, who all have dedicated so much time this summer into the development of our plan. We have an amazing team. So we spent the summer working with our building and district administrative colleagues as well as meeting with different certified staff members across levels and programs in order to get input and feedback on how we can address the needs of our students in CDL. And so we've incorporated that feedback into our guidance on how to implement specially-designed instruction-related services in CDL. We have a guidance document which outlines what this looks like for different students and different special education program placements and at different levels, as well as how to effectively utilize specific resources in the district, such as our paraeducators, as well as the different curriculum options that we have. Our guidance document also extensively outlines what adjustments to special education process will take place as a result of being in CDL. So this includes paperwork, IEP paperwork amendments, our revised evaluation process and how we will conduct meetings. And so this week and next, we have a number of different trainings specifically to help staff with how to implement special ed services during CDL. So for example, how does a resource room teacher use Seesaw effectively? How do staff take data in a virtual setting, which looks very different and so forth? And so we're hoping that those different offerings will really help better prepare our staff to take on CDL with our students. Brian, go to the next slide, please. And so we've also engaged with our families of students in special education. We know that the spring was not easy for some of our families. And so we met with our special education parent advisory council to gather input and perspective into our planning. Parents in this group represent programs and levels across the district and are a fantastic resource that really helped us frame our support and guidance. We also held two parent Q and A's last week on the district Facebook page and we're able to answer, I think, over a hundred and fifty questions. And those questions will be utilized to develop an FAQ specifically for parents of students in special education. And then finally, another major aspect of our planning has been around our onsite evaluation center. As Danielle mentioned, we'll be continuing our onsite eval center that we opened this summer. We were able to complete over fifty-six different evaluations this summer that had not been able to be completed in the spring when we went to remote learning. We still have a number of assessments that are carried over that we'll need to work on this fall. The focus of the center is to complete evaluations for special education eligibility that cannot be completed virtually as the district continues to have a child find obligation during CDL. So we still need to be able to find students who are potentially eligible and evaluate them. We have developed specific guidance for staff to use around determining which evaluations can be completed and how to do as much as possible virtually. But there are some assessments that are only going to be able to be completed in person. We will be continuing to work on the center to expand our ability to test more students per day while still maintaining the significant health and safety protocols that we have set up in the, in our center. So overall, you know, we are really looking forward to having our students return and we're so excited to see our staff working in new and creative ways with our students with disabilities. As someone had mentioned, I think so many of the practices that we're going to be utilizing now are things that are going to carry on into the future and really help our staff to continue to be innovative and reach our students who we may struggle to reach in different ways going forward. Are there questions I can answer for you around special education?
Any questions? Kelly, we know that, that, you know, we welcome you and thank you and we know that there are definitely obstacles that we will be dealing with, but we appreciate your dedication and enthusiasm by your department. So.
Thank you very much for having me.
And next, I believe we're going to have a little short update on Flex.
Yes, good evening, Board Chair Tim Chuck, Board Members, Superintendent Grodding and all others. Happy to be here tonight to present, give you a quick update on Flex Online School. Today was the first day the new staff came together. It was super exciting to have teachers joining the administrative and the small staff and putting it all together, finally see people show up and build on their excitement. Obviously a little bit of a, you know, overwhelmed feeling as well, but super excited to get, get the project started and the school started as we were. So kudos to Principal Autumn and his staff. Paul's been working, you know, non-stop for the last probably six months on this and really has a good foundation in place. Still need to have a lot of more pieces. We're, we're about, you know, we have nine months probably of work to get started in, in two weeks, but we're going to get there. We're gonna, we're gonna get there. So right now currently enrolled students at a little over thirteen hundred. We had thought perhaps that would start dipping down, dropping off, but it's holding steady. It's been holding steady for the last two weeks. So good sign, good sign there. Definitely heavy, about sixty percent elementary, which is different than the national average. Usually you have more in the high school and secondary level in an online school. So with us, we're a little bit upside down on that, but due to COVID and such, I think that's to be expected. Hiring process, we welcomed thirty-two teachers this morning to the, the orientation. And we still need to hire about twelve more of the teaching staff. So still got a ways to go. But supportive HR and business office been, been great in that area and, and we'll get there. And then classified, hired two new office staff and have about three other classified positions to go as well. So all coming together, super excited. We've got the curriculum in place. Teachers are starting to dig into that and Canvas and learning what it's like to be an online teacher. We're all starting that new and again, super excited. I can't wait for our, our students and families to meet our staff because they're super excited, quality, quality teachers. And just, huh, been, been a journey, but I think we're going to get there. So any questions?
Board members, any questions? I just have a quick question. And Pep, I don't know if it, it comes into your, or maybe it's to Superintendent Grodding or to Deputy Superintendent Hansman. So we have thirteen hundred nineteen students in, enrolled in Flex. That means they're not enrolled in their local encasement school. And then the superintendent also mentioned that we have one thousand one hundred students that we, we don't think are enrolled. So this would be together over like roughly twenty-four hundred students that are not in their locally enrolled schools that we're, we're guessing right now? Is, is that a right assumption?
Chair Tim Chuck, this is Superintendent Grodding. That's the assumption right now. Once again, we're in unprecedented times. So, but as of right now, that would, that would be the number. So there's a lot of issues playing in here. So as you know, we are to, if we're, you know, I guess the, the silver lining in this, right now it looks like our elementary class sizes are going to be very acceptable and/or lower. However, as we transfer teachers from our schools into Flex because of financial concerns, both now and in the future, I think we have to be cognizant of that. And I believe also when we do finally get to that ten-day drop on the twenty-eighth of September, I want to be perfectly clear, and I said, one of my goals is to make sure that we are not, we're not over-expending funds in relationship to our revenue. So if we did find out that we had a significant drop in enrollments and we still had acceptable class sizes, there could be an, there would be, we would have to take a real hard look at staffing to make sure that we are using our resources as well as we can and to prepare for the future. I don't know if that's where you're going, but right now the, your math is correct. We are really hoping to drive and market and encourage folks to enroll. And we don't know, because school is starting later, if folks are waiting to see. I know that you've been out, you were out on a couple of visits and you relayed to me that some of our families, even though the communication, we've communicated and communicated, but some of the families that you visited weren't quite sure when school was starting. So I think we, we just need to be diligent in making sure we're reaching out to all of our families. But also when it does come time to take a real hard look at our, at those staffing issues.
Thanks. So we have a question from Ann and a question from Eric. So Ann?
Pep, did you have something you want to?
Yeah, on the math part there, numbers are fairly correct what you stated, Becky. With one, one little caveat, there is we've probably captured, it's rough numbers. It's around one hundred students that were not attending Beaverton last year. Were at private schools or other, other homeschool or whatever. So factor that into the math a little bit. I mean.
Thank you.
Already interrupted there. Ann?
I was, I was going to ask you about it. So I'm glad you brought it up. The, the question I had was around timing for getting teachers hired and, and I know school is starting soon. Do we expect to have those twelve additional teachers assigned before September fourteenth or? I know you guys have got a ton going on.
That's the expectation, yes. Yes, and we're, we're gonna, we're confident we'll get there, yeah.
And Board Member Brian, one of the complexities of that is two, we don't want to go out and hire these teachers and then we look at and find out that we're going to have to reduce some teachers in buildings and then them being the last hired, then we've hired them and put out, so. It's a, it's a, we're trying to hit a moving target with a very complex problem here, but our HR department's really working with this and we're trying to have the best timing with the current information that we have right now.
Ann, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah. It's impressive how many people you're getting for your Flex Online School. That's really bigger than I was bargaining for, but I kind of have a business question on this, so this thirteen hundred students, you know, eight thousand a pop, does this mean business-wise, this is like ten point five million dollars of of defensive, you know, people are coming to our Flex Online School and those are still a part of our our catchment, including a hundred people from outside our district at this point. Is that a fair assessment of looking at the numbers here? Like maybe Schofield on that one.
Eric, I'll try to answer it. I would say, yes, we, but we don't know how many of those students, if we did not have Flex Online, would they have went to other outside entities to have that experience? You know, we just don't know that. We're also looking at trying to market to our homeschool students as well as students that are in some of those outside markets in online programs to try to get them back into our district.
Sounds like you're doing a very good job then. I mean, this is probably more than anybody bargained for, I imagine, so.
Yeah, we're trying, just, I'll give you, talking with a neighboring district of our size, their online enrollment is over five thousand now.
Five thousand, wow, staggering.
So Susan, you had a question?
Yeah, it's a follow-up to Dawn about the comment about Becky saying that there's a barrier in terms of communicating to certain population and I'm wondering what we're doing about it, because when I took a tour and met up with some at-risk students and a parent, it was the same thing. They didn't know when school was starting and so there was a communication breakdown there.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if Shelley wants to come in, but I, I know our communications department, working with our multilingual department, working with sped, working with, everybody's trying to work and get communication out in the best way we can. It's not for a lack of effort. We're working with internal and external partners to to get that information out, but we also know that for some of our families that you know, they're, they're just struggling and whether you see another email or a text message, it can be overwhelming and you know, registering for school may be way down on their priority list. We think it needs to be up on their priority list, but maybe they're just trying to survive to, whether to pay the rent, to find food and everything, so. I think Danielle said it well, is, you know, trying to identify these folks and what are those wraparound services where they can focus on their children's education and it's not because they don't want to. I think they just have so much on their plate, Susan.
So I totally agree with that, but I mean, I'm also wondering, kind of following up with Danielle in terms of these wraparound services that are going to be going you know, into homes potentially, if we could be doing that proactively now, I don't, you know, now to students, we know that typically sign up or they come in the first day, but to proactively go to those students that may not have the resources or families that may not have the resources or it's difficult to get online or phone texts and all that.
So I know our buildings have been trying really hard to reach out to the families. I mean, so staff just reported back today, so. One of the things we built into the schedule in particular for Labor Day week is there is two hours pretty much per day for those four days of student and family connections. So we really wanted to push that, like, yes, there's some PD that you need to kick off the school year and yes, there is also your planned time that you get to prep. But we really highlighted this time as an opportunity for those teachers to start them pushing out to try to like connect with families. So it's built into their schedule for Labor Day week. It's, I think it's about eight hours and then I know the building principals have been working on building, building wide plans on how they're gonna connect with our communities.
So that, just to follow up on that, and I have to tell you, I'm really pleased with the outreach that our district is doing to our families, so it's, it's not a critique, it's just, you know, asking how we can reach those really at-risk families. Does that mean that schools are reaching out to those students who are not enrolled yet?
So one of the big things, so our enrollment, I believe, rolled over from last year, right? So we didn't drop kids out of the system unless they we got a records request. So they've kind of rolled over and we're trying to get parents to verify their enrollment. But so there, there are them kids who we know didn't access CDL and they're gonna be the top priority next week to say, okay, where are you? What are you doing? What do you need help with? And we're giving you eight hours that is, you know, is really intended for the purpose of trying to find those kids who fell off the grid in the spring and are still on our rolls because we haven't gotten a records request and start that kind of pre-work to try to connect with those families.
Yeah, and Susan, can I add, this is to Shiko, one of the things I forgot to add was that when our, when our staff will be calling families, one of the feedback that we heard when we did our community sessions is that some of our families do not have access to the internet and so they really appreciate having hard copies of critical information. And so what we're doing is creating, pulling information from what Shelley and her team have put together as far as FAQs and trying to put all of that together into a really concise document. It could be a few pages and we're going to translate that and some of it have already been translated, but we're actually gonna mail them out to some of our families. And when we call each of them, we're gonna ask, would you like to receive a family guidebook in that, in your language? And then we'll collect that data and then make sure that they actually receive a hard copy of all the important information. So that's a feedback that our families gave us, is making sure that they, they can have a hard copy of it, that they can just post on their fridge. So that it, all the dates are there and all the critical information is available to them. And the other piece of information and data that we, we have not collected, but we've seen other districts collect is computer literacy. So we know what families, you know, if they have access to internet, they have a device, but what we don't have information on necessarily is how many of our families are actually computer literate and where that gap is and how we can make sure to bridge that gap for them. And so that's something that we're gonna be engaging in is creating some, maybe some professional development or some sessions for our families that may need, may need just some scaffolding of how to use the computer or any device.
Well, just to follow up on what you're saying, because it's kind of all the same, that there are families that are not part of the multilingual department that would also need to have it, you know, a handout and a mailer sent to them and hopefully we're capturing those families as well.
So Susan, I can talk to that. So what we've been doing is trying to get that kind of critical information out in a printed form. So in addition to what we've already talked about, social media and the BSD Weekly and emails and the website. We, for example, to advertise the internet, free internet connectivity, we did printed flyers, English on one side, Spanish on the other, and then we distributed them through nutrition services for the pickups that were going on at the schools this, this summer and that actually was very successful. We saw a huge, you know, surge of people signing up after we did that. We also have another printed flyer that's gonna be put into all the student success kits that we're assembling this week and again, those are going to free and reduce lunch students. And they have a list of important announcements, nutrition services, clothes closets. Again, hitting that internet connectivity piece and so we're trying to make that kind of a one-stop-shop flyer. And then we've gone really old school and been using the reader boards outside of schools to try to remind people that, hey, you know, time to, time to sign up for school. And we've been especially trying to push that for kindergartners.
Sophie, Leanne, you've had a question?
I do. It's, it's about the Flex Online. And maybe this was covered back when we had our original presentation on Flex Online, but thinking about these thirteen hundred nineteen students. Are, is the equipment that is required to be on the Flex Online? The Chromebooks, do, have we thought about kids that wanted to do this or maybe signed up for it, but they have connectivity issues? May need a computer? How have we handled that sort of thing to make sure that those kinds of kids have what they need to be successful in Flex Online or have that to be even thinking about way back when, when they had to sign up? Did we offer that kind of program for them?
Yes, in a nutshell, yes. All of that, covered it. But similar to what we've done with all students, I mean, we're, we're trying to make sure we're, have connectivity for all students. I think the only thing, well, it's not even different now because they kind of prompted the rest of the K through two students to also go with iPads, so we're kind of collecting Chromebooks we've had out for the younger kids and, and because Flex from day one, we wanted to go with iPads for the younger kids. Just a little bit more user-friendly for the littles and different apps that we can use for those, so we're doing that. And then the rest of the school district's also following along with that plan as well. And again, Steve Langford and his crew have been working very hard for the last six months on obtaining more Wi-Fi hotspots and we've queried all of our, our families with that, asking them, do they need support with that? Do they have access? So we're in constant contact with our families about that and we're, we're dialed in, ready to go.
Leanne, if I could just jump in for a minute. What we are, have multiple ways for students to connect in Flex and throughout the district. We have a webpage on the website addressing connectivity. We have multiple hotspots. Families are signing up through the website or through the forums and we're, through the combination of hotspots and Comcast Internet Essentials. We've been very successful about making sure all families that lack connectivity have a path to get connected.
Okay, well, that was a lot of information and it's the most important thing we're doing right now and it, it's, this needs to go well and we know we are in very uncharted territory and we're gonna learn as we go. But because we've got this and we know how to pivot and we have good customer service, we're gonna keep. But I'm so impressed with how well all the, all the different departments are working hand in hand and how customer-focused you are and just thank everybody for all their hard work throughout the summer months to get this done and we'll look forward to hearing how the school year rolled out at the end of September. So thank you very much, team. Really appreciate the great report. We're gonna move right along here to discussion items. First thing up is the budget committee member selection process. Mike Schofield.
Thank you, Chair Tim Chuck. Members of the board, Superintendent Grodding, pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Mike Schofield, Associate Superintendent for Business Services. I can't believe we're already talking about the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget when we are, as you've heard, still knee-deep in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. And just so you folks, for a general reminder on kind of where we're at, if I could take a few minutes and talk about where we are on the resource side and just kind of that twenty thousand foot level and then again, where we are on the expenditure side currently and kind of what we're working on in the business office. In terms of resources, I think at our last meeting, we shared that we, we're currently estimating we'll end the, the last two thousand nineteen, twenty year with about fifty-four million dollars in ending fund balance, which is good. We based our budget on somewhere around twenty-six million, so. Pretty good shape there in terms of where we ended the year. In early August, the legislature got together and committed to the nine billion dollar level of funding for the remainder of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one biennium, which was good. That was good news for us as well. So we're in a good place there. We were also allocated four point three million in CARES Act funds. We've probably spent a, a good deal of that will be designated for PPE, cleaning supplies and those kinds of things. I think we're probably close to three quarters of a million dollars in spending in that area already alone. We'll probably use the rest of that to help backfill some problems with the SIA in terms of budget and I'll get to that. We also received a little over six hundred thousand dollars provided by the governor's office for connectivity. So as Steve mentioned, we're buying a bunch of hotspots and doing some work to make sure we've got connectivity in place and that we've got software resources as well and so we've got some dollars that'll help us out there. In terms of the SIA, remember our funding estimate that we built our budget around was thirty-two million for the SIA. Also remember, we didn't, as the pandemic was upon us and we went to distance learning right off the bat, we didn't hire for a number of those positions. What we are on the hook for currently through our staffing allocation methodology is a little over sixteen million and that included the twelve new social workers that Danielle mentioned, which will be helpful to us. But as Superintendent Grodding mentioned, we, we are only expecting to get about a third of those funds. So we're upside down in the SIA, somewhere near six million dollars. We did not at the time think it was a good idea to essentially blow up the staffing allocation model with such little time to go before the school year started, so that's a, that's a hole we need to shore up and we're, we're committed to working towards that as we work through the year. In addition to that, as Superintendent Grodding mentioned, we've got a three to four billion dollar shortfall on the way. Heading, it will bear down on us this winter in terms of having to start to begin to deal with those issues, so. And just so you know, that's somewhere in the realm of a twenty to eight, or twelve to eighteen percent decrease. And as you may recall, every five percent in decrease in funding for us costs about twenty-five million dollars. So you could be in the fifty to seventy-five million dollar range pretty quickly. So it's a significant, potentially significant budget hole that we're facing in twenty-one, twenty-three. On the expenditure side, I mentioned some new costs and services that we're having to provide and we're, you know, we're, we're doing that and making sure we're, we're funding those things for the needs of our students and staff. We did, as, as Pep just mentioned, we've got staffing for Flex Online. We're nearing the end of that. A great big shout out to our principals for their flexibility. Here we are a couple of weeks before school is starting and we're moving staff around here at the bitter end because of all the students that are attending Flex Online, so. Can't thank HR and the principals enough for their hard work. Here, just before school starts, they've done a great job and I cautiously enter Zoom rooms that they're in. The good news is they can't throw live tomatoes, so, but they, they're doing a great job. Our next big hurdle is dealing with staffing in the comprehensive distance learning environment, what that looks like to us. So we are working towards making some determination with some of our support staff in terms of what what services they can provide or what, or if we don't have work for them, what kind of model will we be in? For instance, we know we need bus drivers when we return to school and they're a valuable and important part of our business. But in the meantime, while we're in CDL, what do we do with those folks and what does that look like? So we're working on that right now. Our next big hurdle will be once school starts and as Superintendent Grodding mentioned, what do we do for staffing? For if we have reduced enrollment and what do those numbers look like? So very busy in the business office, way busier than we'd like to be. But we are trying to move and be as reactive and responsive as we But we are trying to move and be as reactive and responsive as we possibly can be to the numbers and where they are. So before I get into Budget Committee, any questions about the numbers and the money and how things are going? Sure, Tom?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I fully understand here. So you were saying a three to four billion dollar deficit and you're talking across the biennium, right? Okay, and what would that look like in terms of rough, real dollars per a year that we would be seeing decreased in each years of those biennium?
So if you if you said this was proportional and across the board, which I don't think it will be. I think, you know, the legislature will do try to do a better job of protecting K twelve in terms of reserves that they have. But if you were, each five percent is twenty five million. So if it was a fifteen percent reduction, we'd be in the seventy five million dollar reduction range.
Okay. So if it was proportional, each year, the biennium, we'd be looking at a seventy million, five million dollar reduction?
Right, at a fifteen percent number, which is kind of picking the middle.
Okay.
And then it's it's significant.
That's more than significant. That's enormous. If the legislature were to try and hold us harmless, then do you think like a middle number would be somewhere in like the thirty million dollar category?
It could be, Tom. There's so much to play out. Remember, we've got another forecast coming at the end of September, which we'll want to see and and we'll keep our eyes on. We've got, I should also mention, we did get some other savings. You know, we did the work share furlough and that included the month of July. So we actually saved an additional about a million dollars in the month of July on that furlough as well. And I should also mention, we we will get, I don't know, I think I touched on it last time, but the Oregon Supreme Court ruled in favor of employers on the purse issue, which will help us. We will be looking at some rate reduction in the next biennium as well. So there's a little, some little glimmers of hope, but we've got big numbers out there to deal with. And that's why we're trying to react as quickly as we are and why we're asking for so much flexibility and grace from our HR department and our building administrators.
I just take that question with a comment, which is that I think now more than ever, we have to keep our advocacy game up, especially at the state level, because the impacts for our advocacy could be huge for our students, especially when we're looking at dollars that big.
Great point.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Are we good on the Budget Committee members?
Yeah, you have openings for Zone One and Zone Two. The process is delineated in the situation sheet. And since I'm new, I'm imagining you're all more familiar with this than I am. And you're ready to go in terms of the process of getting new Budget Committee members appointed.
Does anybody, I mean, did we we put out a an all call?
We will do that after this meeting.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
On to the next discussion item, and that is School Board Goals. Was added to your packet. Board members, as you recall, we discussed this at our work session. We talked a lot about different things that we were going to try to do this next year, knowing full well that we're not sure exactly what the school year is going to look like and what we're going to be facing. And what you instructed was for Tom and I, for board leadership to come up with some goals. So we didn't try to make it a laundry list. We tried to do some big sweeping sort of goals and then talked about what kind of committees we're going to look at the goals and then what the intended outcomes were for all the goals. So you've all had a chance to hopefully look at those. Are there questions? Things we missed, things we need to delete? Open open for thoughts? All right, Tom, I guess you and I got it right, right on the nose here. So appreciate everybody's feedback and we'll add those to the consent agenda. But if you see something that needs to be done, let just let us know, but thank you for that. And then next up, we have a first reading of School Board Policy JHH. This has to do with student suicide prevention. And I'm going to let Danielle walk us through why it's necessary for us to make changes to this to this policy.
Good evening again, Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Grodding and the community. So in the last legislative session, the legislature passed Senate Bill Fifty Two, also known as ADDIEs Act. And it requires all Oregon school districts to adopt a suicide prevention policy, requiring them to develop a comprehensive plan targeting suicide prevention, intervention and postvention. In our district, we've been working really hard. We have, we've had a suicide prevention intervention, postvention plan developed and implemented. We have a whole process around suicide screenings. We train all our administrators, social workers, school psychologists, counselors in this. So we were kind of already doing this work, knowing that there's a need for that. Leslie Rogers, one of our student services, TOSA, really leads that work with those folks. And we were in a spot as a district where we had gone several years without a completed suicide. And it was one of those things that you get to the end of the year that you're happy about. But it kind of feels uncomfortable to also, you know, have to be in a situation where you celebrate. And our district has had some completed suicides recently. And then we've had the completion, suicide completion of some graduates of our district as well. So it's really imperative as we look at this to have a solid plan. And so I, the legislature came back and said, we agree. So districts were pretty much kind of coming up with their own plans. They were working with their county partners, but really felt like there needed to be a district policy. So this policy in particular, JHH, isn't a replacement policy. It is a brand new policy that we would be looking to adopt. So we worked, all districts in Washington County are using the same brief policy language. They've all kind of decided together as we've worked with Washington County Behavioral Health on that as well. And so they kind of decided as a group, we've decided to share resources to develop similar plans across. Because one of the biggest things that happens is actually also postvention. So when we've had, we've lost one of our students or a neighboring district has, the districts come together and help support one another. So we have a pretty extensive flight team in our district. They are a combination of school psychologists and school counselors and social workers. They are phenomenal. But in Beaverton, we're pretty low. So we have quite a few people that we can call on. But last year, in particular, we had a lot of loss, so not just suicide, but also staff loss in depth. And so after a while, that weighs on people. So we need to make sure that we're connecting with our our county partners and our local districts because you may need to bring other people in at different times to kind of help with the situation. Or we, our team is so open to helping other districts. We've had them on to other districts, some of those smaller districts where you don't have that many counselors or you might have a lot of people who are know the student. So through that, we have a suicide prevention plan dedicated to staff members who will receive annual suicide prevention training through safe schools. We also do in-person training every three years. And we are also offering a training, actually, this is the first time we've done this. We will be offering a training to staff next week on, actually, this week, on responding to mental health needs of BIPOC and LGBTQ youth in particular. So having staff come to that. Students receive social, emotional learning and mental health promotion in their schools. And then high school and middle school students will receive three lessons on suicide prevention. And then we are also working with Washington County Behavioral Health to help support families. So how do families become aware of signs and symptoms of potential suicide, suicidal ideation and helping support them? And then we have in terms of intervention, so if we have a student who has made a threat for self harm, so all our behavioral health team and wellness members have received assist training, applied suicide intervention skills training, and they do that every five years. We also meet with counselors and staff around our suicide response protocol and do a refresher annually. It's not something you, you know, you can just drop and not think about because we've actually had several elementary schools that have had to complete the suicide response protocols. And then again, our staff work with those students who are at risk in terms of suicide completion, working on a safety plan for them and working with the family in the county. And a big part of it is the parent, a family connection and network. And then lastly, as I talked about, we have a pretty extensive flight team response for postvention. So if there is a suicide completion, we have a very like a detailed toolkit on how we respond, how we work with public safety and then the the information we communicate out. Because it's really important when we have a loss like that, that we don't, that we're pretty direct about it. Because you need you need to talk about suicide. And I think a lot of people are ashamed by it or, you know, feel it shameful. And the problem with that is then if you don't talk about it, when the biggest thing is people who know they have someone to go to, that is how we can prevent suicide. So this policy here is just saying that as a district, we are committed to suicide prevention, intervention and postvention. And that we are going to help staff, students and parents through this this journey to learn and become more aware around suicidal implications and ideation.
All right, it looks like Susan, you have a question? Danielle?
My day of questions. So Danielle, I have a question about postvention. So for students who attempt suicide, but it's not completed, is there a postvention for those students? I think I heard that in what you were explaining, but I know that part of that is that you would, you know, I'm going to make it personal here for a second, knowing in my own situation that my daughter attempted suicide. That it's up to the family to communicate that to the school district in some ways. So is there a plan in place for families for dealing with, you know, an attempt?
So what you said, Susan, is really important. So we work with our community-based partners, particularly Washington County Behavioral Health. But to be completely honest, we're not always notified if a student has had a suicide attempt. So I know last year, there was a student who had an attempt, who showed up at school the next day. And we found out kind of through like different channels that that happened. And so we really make sure to train our behavioral health and wellness staff to kind of listen to that chatter that happens so that if they get word of anything like that, they can immediately intervene and develop a safety plan for that student. But unfortunately, kind of the way the nuances with, you know, a provider, an insurance provider, letting us know, they don't always let the school know. And so that is definitely a concern we have. And so it's trying to make sure that if we hear something, we're intervening. And and also kind of a lot of the signs and symptoms, because in a lot of cases, when we have a suicide, you know, attempt or even a completion, there are signs that there was possibly, you know, something going on and who is intervening, right? And so we, you know, so that is one of the biggest things we tried to push is as we're looking at students disengaging, becoming despondent, becoming isolated. Really that we're looking for those signs and things. And that goes back to our teachers are the strongest resource in our building because they know their students, right? And so those relationships are so important. And, you know, and it's it's interesting, we're grappling in this Zoom world right now about how are we going to address suicidal ideation and comprehensive distance learning, knowing that we need to have parent permission to have, you know, those one-to-one conversations with students. I think that is one of the things that keeps my my team up at night is trying to figure out how we're going to connect with those students.
Anne, you had a question?
I do. Danielle, I'm so glad to see that, you know, I know that we were doing all the work anyway and I know the board will support getting a policy in place. It's really important that we protect our kids and and help them to feel supported and build healthy habits. I noticed in the policy that was in the packet, there was some bracketed language and I was wondering if there was a recommendation on that. The copy I'm have that I have in front of me is the second paragraph. The district may consult with state or national suicide prevention.
So whether or not we want that, we would like to have that language in there.
Okay, so I guess just the the version that came to us for a second reading, we want to just have those brackets out.
Okay, yes, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
And and this is, you know, this is an, you know, this is usually not the way policy is developed in our district. And usually we we have a policy committee and and we and we go through all of this. But because it came through the legislature and then so so Anne, thanks for bringing that to attention so we can get that correction for the second reading, is do board members have any other things that they would like added or deleted or because like I said, this would normally have been vetted by, you know, a policy committee and and but because it's very important that we get this in our added to our policies, we'll just do this as a second reading. So thank you, Danielle, for for walking us through all of that important information and very, very timely. So thank you. All right, with that, Chair, Chair, Board Member Larson?
Board Chair, Tim Chuck, I move that we approve the consent agenda. A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? With none, we'll have a roll call vote. Anne?
I.
Donna?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Leanne?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Hi.
Chair Tim Chuck, aye. With that, the motion passes seven to zero. Board communication. Anybody have some board communication that they'd like to share? At all? Okay, well, I I I have some board communication. First of all, I want to extend, we've we've already as a board, but to just go on the public record of thanking our Nutritional Services staff for ensuring that all of our students would not go without receiving meals. Normally, there's a two-week delay between before school starts. And it was brought to our attention from our community members, our partnerships that, you know, that we needed to do something. And between Superintendent Grodding and Deputy Superintendent Carl Mead and Charity, within twenty-four hours, they addressed this. And I want to thank all of them for going above and beyond and making sure that we do what's right for kids. So thank you very much for for that happening. And we had a chance to show Congresswoman Bonamici at Aloha Hoover Park last week about our our feeding program and talked to her about getting, being a partner with the USDA and getting waivers and just making her aware of of how we're feeding students and how we're interacting with students. And so that was a a great thing to do. Also, had the opportunity with some other board members to be a part of the Ready Reset Play that was put on by Keila Bell and team for early education and and how we're trying to address our earliest learners and going forward. It was great to to have other board members see that. But I was most impressed with the presentation on anti-bias education for our early learners. And it is very eye-opening to see how many things that we just take for granted That, you know, from, from what kids bring to lunch to what we read, all the different things. And it's, the earlier we can be aware that our students are hearing this anti-bias education, that the more we can get it corrected. And it was just a very well-done day and thank you to the staff for that. And Superintendent Grotting already mentioned the, the all-day leadership. And, and thank you to Pat McCurry for the great job that he did in putting together a full day of wonderful information. And we will be sharing more of that. Donna got a lot out of it and, and Tom. And we're going to be sharing it with some other board members because it's some really good information. But really appreciate Pat and his team for all the great work that they did for making the day so good for all of our building leaders and getting that information. And it's, it's a slow climb, but it's an important climb. And we're going to keep working and keep working and do it well and deep and not just to check on the box. And, and so it was very well done. And then last Friday, I had an opportunity to spend several hours with a Highland middle school psychologist, social worker, going out and meeting with our students. And it was, they, they pre-arranged these meetings. We went to their, to their homes, they meet us outside. Everybody was perfectly safe, but just finding out what they were doing this summer. And just, you know, finding out, you know, meeting them where they are and what kind of things that they need. But it was absolutely eye-opening for me to see the dedication that our staff have all on their own to do what's right for kids and to be reaching out to these kids. And they, this one psychologist, Kelly, why can I not, Kelly Smith, I believe is her last name. I can't believe I, has been doing this all summer long on her own because they knew that there were students in the spring that were not being reached. And she wanted to make sure that they understood when school started, what they needed, what kind of wraparound services, meeting with the parents, all the kind of things that we are talking about, that they didn't wait and were instructed to do it. They just knew this was what was right for kids. And it was very impressive to, to see that. So I was glad that I had those opportunities to, to do that. So with that, Superintendent Grotting, do you have anything for adjournment?
Yeah, just real quick, just part of the success that's going on. I think you heard from some very skilled and empathetic leadership folks tonight. And we have some amazing teachers, amazing support staff in the district. But also, your participation as a board, your support as a board goes a long ways. And while we can always improve the we, there's a lot of we going on right now because you don't get to where we're at right now without a lot of we. There's that once again, I think there's always room for improvement, but I think everybody's working as hard as they can for our students and families. But appreciate the board's engagement, your questions, as well as your support. So thank you.
And I believe we, we're going to let the last comment go to our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Mead.
Hi, sorry. So I just wanted to share with you, we got word today that the USDA had extended free lunch service for ages one to 18 through December 31st. So that was very good news. So Suzanne Bonamici is doing some very good work for us on behalf of our students.
That was great, that was great. All right, everybody, another Zoom meeting in the books. We'll see you all on September 29th at 6:30. And thank you, everybody, for all the good work you're doing on behalf of our students and looking forward to an unusual, but we've got this as community engagements. We've got this, so we'll see you all at the end of September. We're adjourned.